My apologies to the flag and the United States of America. And to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Hello, everybody. Thank you for coming tonight.
I'll make a motion that it's all right to eat cookies tonight.
Just gonna eat. I take it you haven't had dinner yet?
I did.
Under public comment, a first order business is public comment. Is there any public comment tonight? Board and committee reports, we have none. Grants, gifts, and donations. I have a council on aging donation from the Central Congregational Church for $2,000.
Make a motion to accept the donation from the Central Congregational Church for $2,000.
Second.
Any discussion? That's quite, that's quite a big donation.
Very generous.
Yeah. I know Cindy sends out notes, right?
She does.
Yeah. Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. A $40 donation for the Council on Aging from Alba Goldthor. Want to take a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. A council on aging donation from Kathy and Sean Malone for $100.
Motion to accept.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor? Aye. A council on aging donation from Josephine Antico for $50.
Motion to accept.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Council on Aging donation from Mary Gill for $25.
Motion to accept.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Council on Aging donation from Angus Sampson for $20.
Motion to accept.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. There is no public hearing. Under new business, we have an approval of 2024 entertainment license for the Old Newbury Golf Club. 319 Newbury Port Turnpike, small band music only, 6:00 to 9:00 p.m. It's yearly season. Is there a motion?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? The ayes have it. I'm going to approve a 2024 entertainment license for Sunset Club for Old Point Road. Live bands and performances, no later than 8:00 p.m. yearly. This is a yearly license. I want to take a motion.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Okay. Any discussion on it? All in favor? Aye. Any opposed? The ayes have it. Thank you. I have a one-day liquor license for the Ipswich Ale Brewery for Old Newbury Bonfire.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Any discussion? Do we have a date on that?
January 13th.
January 13th. Twenty-four. Okay. Any further discussion? All in favor? Aye. Jan- uh, a one-day liquor license for Decanted for the, again, the Old Newbury Bonfire on January 13th.
Motion to approve.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Approve a one-day liquor license for House Beer Brewing LLC for the Old Newbury Bonfire on 1/13/24.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Passes. New, approve a one-day liquor license Far From the Tree LLC for the Old Newbury Bonfire on 1/13/24.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? No. And then we have approve a request for a public property use, special permits, use of council on aging room at...
Newbury Elementary.
Newbury Elementary School.
Oh, okay.
It's the place that they vacated.
Yeah. Should be.
From January 9th until April 12th.
I'm sorry. I refreshed my memory on this one. What was this, what was the purpose of this?
Music keyboards.
Oh, the music teacher.
Mm-hmm, yep.
Okay, that's right. Thank you. Can, I'll entertain a motion?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? The ayes have it. Okay, so the next item on the agenda is fiscal year 2025 budget goals. Yeah, we're done with that stuff. Budget goals. I wanted to have a full board to have this discussion. I think that's only fair.
We'll have to.
I think, I don't know. We'll have to. I think, I think you are, but I'm not sure. Budget goals, so I want to wait. I'm going to entertain a motion to table this to our next meeting till we have a full board.
Make a motion to table it to the next meeting when we have a full board.
Second. Okay. Under discussion, Bill, you printed out some information, right?
Yes, 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 yes. These came from the 2000, fiscal year 2024 budget and annual report. And in that report, there are select board goals and objectives slash budget priorities. So I made copies of the pertinent pages. There's four pages here. I'll pass them out. We can put one in Dana's mailbox.
Yeah. Thank you.
And I think we'll...
Homework for our next meeting.
Sounds like we'll be looking at what those goals were.
Yeah.
As documented and, and then see how we did. And then we have to formulate goals and objectives for fiscal year 2025.
Because this, this really helps, helps, actually helps Tracy run down and helps, helps set priorities for our budget. Because we're into budget season now. Okay, so I have a motion to table that until our next meeting, January 9th. All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? No. Now we have retail liquor license renewals. So, um, isn't there a special thing I have to read for these? I remember, I remember having to read something special about this.
Are we on Christmas vacation for our next meeting?
Yes, we are.
Don't we get that weekend, that week off?
We do, but I vaguely remember...
No, I'm teasing, I'm teasing, I'm teasing.
Having to read something about renewing these licenses.
When is that? That's the day after Christmas.
Just take the votes. It would be the day after Christmas, but I think that's just...
Yeah, unless, yeah, January 9th is our next meeting, first meeting that we're going to, unless we have to have a meeting on J- December 26th. Like we have pertinent pending business that Tracy says I need to, I need the board to meet. I'm not planning on meeting. And Tracy won't be here, so there'd be no meeting on the 26th.
Well, that's crazy to go over budget goals without you here, even though you just, you know.
No, she'll be here January.
No, no. January, maybe.
That's what I meant, yeah.
Yep. So, all right, I guess I'll entertain a motion to review and approve the 2024 liquor license renewals. So Massachusetts General Laws, Chapter 138, Section 15, these are off-premise licenses, all alcohol as follows. Number 0007PK0794, the Sylwanowitz Family Associates Incorporated, doing business as D&amp;J Liquors, located at 53 Middle Street.
Main.
I'm sorry, Main Street. That's not going to happen.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Okay, any discussion?
Um, the, the only thing, should we, should we, we be mentioning now that we've looked at the fees for these licenses? And what, what the plan is to maintain the current fee structure?
Yeah.
For fiscal year 25, 24, 25.
Okay, so that's a good point. So Tracy, can you...
Sure, so I, I, I can't remember which meeting it's in the, I think it was the last meeting. You, you voted to increase the license fees. And Jessica, who was our intern helping us out, now that Julie's gone, has, is contacting everyone, notifying them of the fee increase. So that when they come to pick up their licenses this time.
Okay. So there is a, there is a fee increase and they'll be notified when they come to pick up. They don't pay to pick up their licenses.
Maybe include it with the licensing.
Yeah, she's calling them all individually and letting them know.
Okay, good.
And, and just to let people know, I think what, what we did was we compared the fees for the neighboring towns. And com- and did a matrix and compared ours to theirs and...
We didn't go up significantly at all.
No, we really didn't.
We went up minimal.
We really didn't, but... We're as high as some of the neighboring towns, but still not as high as...
We don't want to be the highest. We don't want to be the lowest. We'd like to be in the middle, just right. Okay, so I have a motion and a second for the Sylwanowitz Family Associates, D&amp;J Liquors. All in favor? Aye. Any opposed? The ayes have it. License number 00010PK0794, Plum Island Fine Wines and Spirits Incorporated, doing business as the Cottage Wine and Spirits, 14 Plum Island Boulevard.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Any discussion on this one?
Yes.
Yep.
This is doing business as the Cottage Wine and Spirits on Plum Island Boulevard. However, they're listed as a parking lot. Not on this, but on further down in... On the actual license itself.
Plum Island, 14, these are the Cottage Wine and Spirits, 14 Plum Island Boulevard, Newbury, Mass. Jeff Christensen, where did you see? On the copy of the...
Yeah. This.
Yeah. Wine and Spirits.
Where?
Oh, this is the wrong form for this. Yeah. This is their license for a parking lot.
Right, but it doesn't just, that's not the description.
They have a license, there's a license request here for liquor.
Liquor, right.
So...
Two, two separate licenses.
Yeah, right. So there's one license. That's right, right.
You have a license for the parking lot and you have the liquor.
So, if you look here, Leslie, this one that we're on here, this license number here, 00010PK0794, that's here. This is for the retail license for the alcohol beverages. The one that Bill just pulled out, that's going to be up here later in the agenda.
Alrighty.
That's for the parking lot.
Separate.
Okay. Two different licenses. Okay?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. So, this one here. I have a motion and a second. We had some discussion.
Motion to approve.
And any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? The ayes have it. Okay, this is going to be under Massachusetts General Laws, Chapter 138, Section 15, off-premise licenses, wine and malt as follows. License number 00018PK0794, the Butchery Incorporated, doing business as Newbury Butchery, 2 Morgan Ave. I'll entertain a motion.
Motion to accept.
Second.
Any discussion? No. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? The ayes have it. Okay, so this is under Massachusetts General Laws, well, the same thing, actually. So the second one is for license number 090392PK0794, Wyatt's Market, DBA Wyatt, 6 Fruit Street, Unit D. Is there a motion?
Where are you getting that? Where am I?
The top of page two.
Top of the second page.
Oh, wait, I have a motion to approve.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Nope, the ayes have it, okay. Now I have under Massachusetts General Laws, Chapter 138, Section 12, licenses authorizing sale of beverages to be drunk on premise. This is wine and malt. This is license number 04762RS0794, Bob Lobster, 49 Plum Island Turnpike. Is there a motion?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Any discussion on Bob Lobster? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? The ayes have it. Massachusetts General Laws, Section 138, Chapter 138, Section 12, licenses authorizing sale of beverages to be drunk on premise, wine, malt, and club. This is...
It's the one on the Packer River.
Old Town Country Club.
Yep.
The Old Town Country Club, but I thought they were going to change to cordials, wine, malt, and cordials. Did you, I didn't see any cars on, it's from them. Okay. Let me go back and look at this one, hold on. Old Town Country Club, all right, well, this is the annual wine and malt. Mike Collins, co-president. All right, well, that's what they're asking for, so that's what they're going to get. Okay. I'll entertain a motion.
Uh, motion to approve.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor? Aye. Any opposed? All right, the ayes have it. Massachusetts General Laws, Chapter 138, Section 12, licenses authorizing sale of beverages to be drunk on premise, all alcohol. This is going to be license number 03245RS0794, Rusty Can LLC, doing business as Rusty Can, 9 Fruit Street.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Any discussion? No. All in favor? Aye. Any opposed? License number 00020CL0794, Old Newbury Golf Club Incorporated, doing new business as Old Newbury Golf Club, 319 Newbury Port Turnpike.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Perhaps on this one, I mean, they specify all alcoholic beverages, maybe that's where they want the cordials.
No, that was the, that was the Old Town Country Club.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Yeah, no, their license says, uh...
Yeah, I know.
Wine, wine and malt, so I think he might, maybe was changed to cordials, so he's going to have to pay another fee maybe, I don't know. Okay, so this is Old Newbury Golf Club. This is all alcohol. There's a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? No, the ayes have it. License number 00021RS0794, Plum Island Beach Comer Incorporated, doing business as Plum Island Beach Comer, 23 Plum Island Bou- Boulevard.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Okay, any discussion?
No.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. License number 06141RS0794, the Sunset Club LLC, 2 and 8R Old Point Road, Newbury, Mass. Is there a motion?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Is there a second? Okay, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? The ayes have it. I think you're done, Mr. Stone.
Happy holidays, everybody, thank you.
Merry Christmas.
Merry Christmas.
Don't forget your jacket.
Oh, thank you.
Okay, next we have Massachusetts General Laws, Chapter 138, Section 12, licenses authorizing sale of beverages to be drunk on premises, all alcohol hotel. License number 06455HT0794, Plum Island Blue LLC, DBA Blue, in on the beach, 1820 and 22 Fordham Way, Plum Island, Newbury, Mass.
Motion to accept. Sorry.
Discussion.
Any discussion?
This is the one that came up last year and part of their premises is on the other side of the street. Should that be described in...
Well, it says right here, 18 and 20, and 22 Fordham Way.
Because it would, they would have to take it off-premise in order to get to the other side.
Yeah, they're not allowed to do it this way. Their license is for on-premise. So if they found drinking off-premise, they'll be fine. Okay. Okay. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Vote to sign ABBCC Renewal Certification 2024.
Vote to sign.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? The ayes have it. Vote to sign the ABBCC 2024 Seasonal Population Increase Estimation Form.
Uh, vote to sign the ABBCC 2024 Seasonal Population Increase Estimation Form. Second.
Any discussion?
Clarification discussion, seasonal population refers to as the population or an increase of licensing.
This is something that the ABBCC provides to us. They do a population increase es- estimation, they guess, we just have to approve it. I don't think it's meaningful in any way, shape, or form.
No, because they have basically said that there's not going to be any increase.
Right. They don't expect any major development. I just, we just need to sign it. Okay. Any further discussion?
No.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
They certainly didn't go to our Massachusetts Transit meetings, huh?
Okay, so now we have town of Newbury Business License Renewals 2024. Thomas Ryan, DBA Plum Island Beach Walk LLC at 49 Northern Boulevard, parking lot in cooler full of water. Is there a motion?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? No. Gail Gand- Gandolfi, DBA G&amp;G Antiques at 160 Hay Street, Crafts and Gifts.
Motion to approve.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. David and John Molten, DBA Riverfront Marine Sports Incorporated at 292 High Road, sale, storage of boats, marine supplies, and gasoline. Is there a motion?
I'm not going to approve, I mean, make a motion because I've got a vote there.
All right, so you're going to recuse?
Just so nothing gets screwed up, not that I probably need to.
Okay. So you, you moved it, Leslie, is there a second?
Yes.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. One abst- anybody abstaining? The ayes have it. Linda Gamash, DBA Sadies for here at 6J Fruit Street, general business beauty shop. Is there a second, first, or is there a motion?
Motion to approve.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The ayes have it. William D. Francisco, Showway Storage, DBA Newbury Self-Storage at 131 Newbury Port Turnpike, general business, self-storage.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Waldo Evan Jesperson, DBA Jesperson Studios at 7 Marsh Meadow Lane, Crafts and Gifts.
Motion to approve.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion?
Discussion.
Yes.
Are these Crafts and Gifts being sold on this site or is this just their mailing site?
I'm not sure about that. Let me look at, let me look them up.
That would come under, um...
There's a note in the bottom of this license that says it's still valid at the above location, only number C/G-1. I don't know what the significance of that is.
License as follows as expected. And so what, what was your question, Leslie?
The question is, are they doing business at that address or just using it as their...
Well, the business license is valid only at this location, 7 Marsh, Marsh Meadow Lane. So... He's doing something there.
And he's, and the form says it's at 7 Marsh Meadow, Meadow Lane.
Yeah, see right here?
Yeah, I know, I did see that. I just, I wasn't aware that it has been approved for a, a business that brings people in and out of the property, that's all.
Well, they don't necessarily have to, you don't necessarily have to have a business that brings traffic in. It could be a home business, or it can be an online business, you can do mail away. It's just that he's operating a business called Jesperson Studios here. Doesn't necessarily mean there's going to be traffic there. And I don't believe we've received any complaints about that from anybody, so... Okay.
Not that I'm aware of either.
Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? The ayes have it. Jeffrey Woodburn, DBA Little River Realty Trust at 17 Newbury Port Turnpike, general business, fuel, storage, delivery.
Motion to approve.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, Steve Service, Count Incorporated, here of Steven and, and Rio Loda, Andy Alloa, at 52 Main Street, used car dealers license, plus two to buy and sell second-hand motor vehicles.
Motion to approve.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion?
I have a question.
Mm-hmm.
It says this license expires in January 1st, 2025. Is that, is that like a two-year license? The next one does, no, no, it doesn't. Is that...
Oh, that would be great. 25 would expire. 1231? Or 121, 2025? Or maybe because it's a used car dealer, it has to go?
I don't know the answer to that. I can check last year's license and see tomorrow.
Yeah, it says this license must be posted in a conspicuous place upon the premises. I think, I think it has to expire.
Actually, actually, I'm sorry. I did talk to Gretchen about that. I asked Gretchen about that and she said that's the way it's, was done for used car dealers.
Yeah, that's what I thought. It was specific to the used car dealerships.
It doesn't, doesn't expire at the end of 2024, it's January 1st of the following year.
So he can operate business, yeah.
By one day.
By one day.
Yeah, by one day. Sorry.
That's okay. Okay. Any further discussion? All in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Okay, Nassar Abu Ayid, DBA A&amp;L Prime Energy Consultants Incorporated at 17 Central Street, auto marine, gasoline, car repair, and sale of related goods.
Motion to approve.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Sylwanowitz Family Associates Incorporated, DBA Main Street Mini Mart, and D&amp;J Liquors at 53 Main Street, common vic- vicueller.
Motion to approve.
Is there a second?
Second.
Second.
Okay. Any discussion? All in favor? Aye. Christine and Dud Roop, DBA Harmony Natural Learning Center at 6769 Newbury Port Turnpike, general business and education.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Is there any discussion? All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
This is Erin Bly, DBA Dancing Goats Apothecary at 7 Marsh Meadow Lane, Crafts, Crafts and Gifts.
Motion to approve.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion on this one? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? No. James Noyes, DBA Noyes Auto Services at 1 Noyes Lane, auto marine, auto repair.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Ronald Barrett, DBA Barrett Transportation at 18 Hutchins Road, general business, vehicle repair.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Is there any discussion?
Yes, there is. If you look at the actual document, um, there was a mistake made. It says expires 1231, 2023. Gretchen's made a copy correcting it to 2024. So in the package of licenses that goes around to be signed, you need to make sure it's the one that says 2024.
Okay. Thank you. Good question. Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? The ayes have it. Ron Barrett, DBA Plum Island Taxpayers Association at 8 Plum Island Boulevard, common vicueller and parking lot.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Nope. James Sullivan, DBA Rusty Can at 6G Fruit Street, common vicueller.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Stephen Keavill, DBA SK Tree Service at 71 Main Street, general business, tree service.
Motion to approve.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, any discussion? All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Jim Sullivan, D B A Wyatt's Market at sixty Fruit Street, common vic- vicueller.
Motion to approve.
There's a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Randy Shane, D B A The Access Clinic for Wellness at nineteen Central Street, Suite C, general business.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Henry C Becker, D B A Henry C Becker Custom Building Limited at eight Riverview Drive, general business.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor? Alright.
Aye.
Any opposed? No. Vivian Anastasia Herten, D B A Anastasia's Flowers on Main at fifty six Main Street, gen- general business.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? John Galant, D B A Jay Galant Pool Inspire at ninety six Newbury Port Turnpike, general business.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Neil Deets and Edward Lynch Junior, D B A Deets and Lynch Capital at twenty eight Green Street, general business.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Yes. Michael and Kate Duffield, D B A Newbury Kayak and Canoe at two ninety one High Road, general business.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Jayden Auto Incorporated, Jeremy P.
Cohane.
Cohane at six Newbury Port Turnpike, used car dealer license, class two, to buy and sell secondhand motor vehicles.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Any discussion?
Uh, just quickly, um, this is consistent with the other one for used cars, it also expires January first, two thousand twenty five.
Good. That's, that's how it's supposed to be.
Okay.
Um, all in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Okay. William Kowski Junior, D B A Bills Auto Repair at twenty four Middle Road, Auto Marine. Subject to the restrictions and conditions of the special permit issued on two twenty six eighty six and the decision of the zoning board of appeals, uh, eight six ninety nine for the property located at twenty four Middle Road.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor? Any opposed? No. Carla Capalupo, D B A Carla Capalupo at twenty six Plum Island Boulevard parking lot. Uh, U zero two zero one one five, T O U, uh, no, two, I think that's two. Uh, U zero two zero one one nine, entrance and exit on Plum Island Boulevard only.
Motion to approve.
There's a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Sarah Van Golden, Manager, D B A Adeline Rude Conference and Retreat Center at forty six Elm Street, common vicueller.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor? Aye. Any opposed? The ayes have it. Brandon Kelly, D B A Store Yourself Self-Storage at twelve Kent Way, general business self-storage.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Hank Moore, Treasurer, D B A Old Newbury Golf Club Incorporated at three nineteen Newbury Port Turnpike, common vic- vicueller.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Ryan Guthrie, Brandon Guthrie, D B A Blue, the Inn on the Beach at twenty Fordham Way, common vicueller in, with an N.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor? Aye. Ryan Guthrie, Brandon Guthrie, D B A Blue, Inn on the Beach at twenty Fordham Way, parking lot, eleven Fordham Way. U zero one dash zero dash two six.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Ryan Guthrie, Brandon Guthrie, D B A Blue, the Inn on the Beach at twenty Fordham Way, parking lot.
Should be seventy seven.
Not instead of.
The license says seventy seven.
Q seventy seven Southern Boulevard. Yeah. Uh, you, uh, U zero one dash zero dash four one, zero four one. Is there a motion?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Barry Davis, D B A B D Automotive at twenty four Middle Road, Auto Marine. Subject to the restrictions and conditions of the special permit issued on two twenty six eighty six and the variance issued on eleven seventeen ninety four by the Newbury Zoning Board of Appeals for the property at twenty four Middle Road.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Jeffrey Christensen, D B A Plum Island Fine Wine and Spirits, D B A The Cottage Wine and Spirits at fourteen Plum Island Bu- Boulevard parking lot.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Okay, any discussion? This is the parking lot, the one that we were talking about earlier. All in favor? Aye. Anybody opposed? The ayes have it. Jeffrey Christensen, D B A Plum Island Fine Wine and Spirits, D B A The Cottage Wine and Spirits at fourteen Plum Island Bu- Boulevard. General Business Retail Package Store.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor? Any opposed? Jeff Christensen, D B A P Peel, P I Rentals LLC, D B A The Cottage at fourteen Plum Island Bu- Boulevard. General Business Surf, Paddle, Kayak, Skate and Sit Skate Sales and Rentals.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Uh, any discussion? All in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Janus Auto Works of Hampton Falls Incorporated, care of Edwin Carrier and Michael Tartelione at number eighty eight Newbury Port Turnpike.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? No. Okay. All business none, town administrator.
The recreation master plan has been complete for the, um, Central Street Athletic Field area.
Okay.
So the committee has received the final master plan from Huntress Associates. They were the one commissioned to do it, um, and it's available, we just have one copy of it. So it's on, um, the desk out front if anyone wants to come and take it out, review it, look at it.
Okay. Will they be before, will that be before the board?
Yep, it, before the commission, the rec committee?
Yeah, will they be bringing it before us at all?
Um, I don't know.
Okay.
I haven't heard anything from David.
Okay.
I can ask him if you want to come.
After attending some of the meetings, they did discuss the fact that they would have to come before the select board.
Okay. So we'll just have to review it.
Okay.
Thank you.
Um, do you want me to ask them to get on the agenda or?
If you'd like, if they wanna be on the agenda, it would be nice if they could give us a date so we can plan for it.
Okay.
Tell them not to twenty sixth.
Okay. Um, the capital planning kicked off budget season with their first meeting on December seventh.
Who did?
The Capital Planning Committee.
Okay.
So we have approximately four and a half million dollars in capital repairs that are gonna be before us throughout this budget season, culminating obviously in town meeting action, um, in the spring. They range from roofs seem to be a common theme. We're, we're still working on the elementary school roof, we're gonna be looking at the library roof and the Lower Green Schoolhouse roof. Um, H V A C is coming in at number two.
Wasn't Lower Green just done? No. I thought there was a new roof, but.
No.
Okay.
No, it's failing. Um, so H V A C is second with the Newbury Elementary School and the library, so we're gonna be looking at those two. Uh, Newbury Elementary, the parking lot needs paving. Um, fire department, we're looking to replace, uh, engine nine, ambulance two. Purchasing a power load stretcher. The replacement of the apparatus bay floor on Morgan Ave, the Morgan Ave Station and purchasing firefighter protective gear. And the P D has, uh, well, had Taser replacements as well as cruiser replacement. You know Patty, uh, Chief Fisher had, had mentioned, um, that she received some grant funding to pay for that, so. Uh, the fiscal year twenty twenty through three audit is currently underway, the auditors arrived this week. So they've been working with the finance department to get everything hopefully that they need. And, uh, in terms of job opportunities, we are currently seeking, um, I had mentioned some of them before. The library director, uh, worked with the H R board to reclassify Julie's position. So that's now gonna be more of an assistant town administrator role, um, a, a more responsible, more highly responsible position. Um, conservation agent is open and the assistant town clerk position is also open. So, um, it's a tough time of year to, to have all these positions posted cuz I think people are thinking about holidays and other things, but. Um, and finally, our assistant town planner, Kristen Grubbs, has asked me to let you guys know that the Housing Choice Coalition is inviting you to a meeting. Um, they're, they're hoping to work together to address housing from a regional approach as all of our community, communities are currently engaged in the housing production plans. Um, so they wanted to invite each of the select board members to work with them to create more housing in our region that's welcoming and equitable for all. Um, that meeting is gonna be held on December fourteenth from six to seven thirty P M at the Y W C A at, uh, thirteen Market Street. And, um, anyone that's interested, you, let me know and I can send you all the registration link.
This is, they, they, this is, who is, what's the name of this company, this group again?
Housing Choice Coalition.
Yeah, that's it.
Yeah.
I think I've.
I think this is meeting number two.
Yeah.
It is, yep, that's the, uh, the link is on there too.
So they've invited the whole select board to attend?
Mm-hmm.
So we'll have to post that meeting.
The majority wants to attend.
Yeah. So do we have time to post it? It's in two days. No.
No.
Nope.
Six o'clock on Thursday.
So we can't have a quorum. So. Well, I'll take ten of the board.
You can have a quorum, you just can't talk.
No, you can't discuss.
Or am I wrong?
Well.
That's what we always thought it to be, but, um.
It's changed.
There was a ruling.
Really?
Mm-hmm. Well, it, it came about due to a council on aging meeting, I think that some board members attended.
Yeah.
Uh, ruled by the Attorney General's Office that found us in violation, but I don't know. I wasn't at the meeting, so I don't know.
So the chair, the chair of the council on aging directed, directly asked a question of the board members who stood up and answered it.
I can't remember that, but I mean.
And.
Isn't it state statute that you can attend a meeting, any town, any place? I mean, did the state change that or did we change it?
No, no, the state did.
Did they change?
Division of Open Government changed it.
Did they change just us?
No. It's insane. No.
We're sure on that, right?
Well, I'm positive. Tracy, am I positive?
That's.
So, um, so we can't have a quorum, so.
I know I can't make it Thursday night. On December fourteenth. So it sounds like if you, Jeff and Dana choose among the three of you.
Which two are gonna attend, and I've already attended one, so I'll step back if the other two wanna attend, but, um, if nobody's gonna attend, I will, I may attend.
These aren't recorded meetings, are they? Do you know, Leslie?
I don't remember recall if she mentioned anything about that one, so.
Well, I don't know.
So.
What's the background of this group? Where does it come from?
There are, there are a group of people that are around, some Newbury residents belong, you'll be put, uh, the whole area.
So it's not like a state group or?
No.
No, it's the same kind of thing that's, um, that we had a discussion with last week, uh, for the different district breakdowns. So everybody can understand what's going on in and around the area that fall into the same, pretty much same category. That fall into if you have a train in your community or close to your community.
Still what they're talking about is the train.
But they're involved, they're going to involve the other towns, so we're just not having a discussion by ourselves.
Yeah. Interesting.
I, I have a question. Um, well, it's not a question, it's a statement. Um, someone at the meeting last night asked Martha, when it was said that there were definitely three grants you would not be eligible for if you didn't play the M B T A zoning game.
Yeah, Mass Works, LeBlanc.
Right.
Mass Works.
And, um, there were a bunch of other grants that you get a lower priority if you applied for them. And, uh, the woman asked, could we quantify how much money we've gotten from those kinds of grants? Okay? That might be a good selling point, an annual town meeting to say, you know, if we don't play the game with zoning, um, last year or some period, this is how much money we got from grants.
Mm-hmm.
We not, we may not be eligible to get these grants, okay? And then Martha, last night or today, mentioned, um, looking at the, what you just said about ca- uh, capital planning. There may be some events or some, some things listed in capital planning that could
Be eligible.
Grant money be eligible for, um, and it might be wise to capture that. Is to say, hey, you know, we, we, we would spend this much money for capital planning, but if we were eligible for grants, we, at least would be eligible for it, um, is a, a, a good selling point.
Yeah, I could certainly work with Martha to, to identify, I know we've applied for uh, quite a few Mass Works grants, I don't know that we've been successful, but.
Looking for grants.
So that's not.
But I can, um, I can work with her to figure out which grants, which grant eligibility may be called into question if we don't.
Yeah.
So that's not really our highway funds, our bridge repair funds or any of that stuff?
Mass Works isn't bridge repair, but I don't know which other ones, you said there were other grants that were lower.
I think it might be the small bridge program.
I don't think it was specific, I think they just mentioned the three grants that you would definitely not be eligible for. There's like many other grants you get a lower priority on, but I don't, they, they may have knowledge of what those, what those.
My guess is the small bridge would be in that.
Small bridge program.
Yeah.
I mean, some of the things we don't realize is, and I did send it to Tracy, is I mean, some of the things we don't realize is, and I did send it to Tracy, is a lot of our environmental groups based in different specters or, or different levels of government are working on streamlining the permitting and other things that go along with replacing some of the title restrictions in our town. And we're, we're not even member of the wider section. We're not really even aware that they're doing it, but they're doing it. Which means that when that's all done, you could be subject to maybe moving forward to have some pressure to repair or replace that restriction. But they usually try also to go out and find some funding for you too, but I think, I mean, there's, they're doing a, you know, on several. I wish they had just done it on all the restrictions of the railroad when they put it through. The upper marge would be a lot better place for it, but there's, you know, there's concrete, there's all these different places that, you know, in certain groups are working on within um the environmental spectrum.
So this, that's like.
Just the way it goes.
A side dish of capital planning.
No, it's.
From someone else uh that may, we may have to pay for.
Yeah, it's just the way it goes, but usually the funding comes along with it ult- ultimately. It's something that people look at, try to set up a grant for you, but. It's just the way it is.
Interesting.
The problem with the M B T A zoning issue is that we're at the mercy of an open town meeting. That's the issue. And the board will bring the zoning forward, but we're at the mercy of how town meeting votes. And we're not alone in that. It's every small town.
No, right, I think there's, what is it, like five or seven communities that are in the same, on the same threshold that we are? Where they're, they just aren't um, they really have to move a little bit faster. Everybody else has their uh. We're not a um trained community, but we're within a part of our, us, we are.
Oh, yeah, and that's only up here what we saw. This, this is across the whole Commonwealth.
Right, oh, it is.
So it's more than, yeah, there's more than seventeen.
No, but just in our, in, in the region that they're working with.
But they're all subject, if you look across the whole Commonwealth, there, any, but any small town like us that is subject, that has an open town meeting form of government is in the same kit and caboodle.
Like I said, we should have some discussion on maybe doing a Saturday morning meeting somewhere. Just to really kind of bring, I think, you know, our planning board has done a good job on trying to find some parcels that could work and the parcels that would have some strategic value in getting that done. But no one's gonna know about that work really when they go to town meeting if we can't get a meeting together and get it out to their information board.
And that, that's why the importance of getting this, to this next upcoming town meeting is uh more valuable than I think a lot of people will, don't understand that the cutoff is December thirty-first, twenty-five. And if we don't get the word out there, oh, with reassurances and like that, it probably won't fly the first time around.
But we'll see.
It, it depends, I think. It depends on how it's presented and what, what's in it, you know, when you tell people what it is and what's in it for Newbury and what's not in it, if you don't play with it, okay, if you're not eligible for grants. I mean, you may be surprised. We, we kinda kicked the can around, Jeff, about having some informative meetings in January to get, sort of get the finger on the pulse of what people think or want or don't want in this town.
I think we need to be a little creative on when we have the meetings 'cause sometimes evening meetings just don't work for everyone.
Right, right.
Way back, like I said earlier, you know, when we were doing the, the village at Little River for whatever, if that worked or didn't work, you know, we had several meetings like on a Saturday or even in an afternoon, you know, because, you know.
Everybody has a different schedule.
Hmm, and certainly kids are, kids are in school.
Yeah.
I mean, someone mentioned like possibly like ten o'clock on Saturday, Saturday mornings and making it convenient by saying have one at Pitter Hall for the um Plum Island population, make it easy for them to get to. One at maybe twenty-five High Road, so people from Old Town can get to it and one one up here with the library where you can have, but I mean, I mean, last night, Leslie, there were like fifteen citizens there. There were like fifteen citizens there.
Fifteen to twenty.
And there, and there were four or five people that added up to about twenty. I was there, Leslie was there, uh Pete Pecos was there, Martha and Kristen. And I mean, and that was, that was it. That was it, the, 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 the meeting about M B T A zoning. So, you know, m- maybe, maybe the uh, uh public relations company can help, come up with some ideas to communicate.
I think what I worry about in the whole.
Oh, I'm sorry. I did speak to Martha about that this morning.
Yeah.
We'll be working with them.
I think what I worry about in that whole spectrum is, you know, you're gonna not be able to receive these grants, but you're also gonna go to the end of the line on a lot of others.
Mm-hmm.
So that really leaves it specifically up to how they feel about that.
That's why I.
And I don't like that.
Yeah, well.
So.
Okay.
I mean, if you're gonna take away free money, that's, you know, now you're getting in. But I understand why people worry and we really gotta look at some of the locations to see what the impacts are gonna be to your town.
From my understanding to um the one that they suggested on Kentway, I think um part of this whole parcel on what they refer to as uh District South that uh.
You mean where we at?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Has gone under agreement, so that might be just coming off the table anyway.
You mean for rental?
It's, it, it's changing hands. The open land.
Okay.
All right, so um we have under correspondence, a broadband infrastructure gap network grant program. We have a letter from Carrie Morris, who's the senior manager of government and regulatory affairs in Greater Boston area. She's asking us to sign on a letter of support. Um, Massachusetts has received federal funds for the broadband infrastructure gap networks grant program to connect unserved areas with broadband service. While most of your community has been built out, a letter of support from you is an integral part of our application for this grant would be used towards completing these remaining passings. Um, we have all, we have broadband service here in Newbury, so I don't see any, any um any reason why we wouldn't wanna sign on to this. Um, next is review and approve meeting minutes. But do we have any meeting updates first? I don't think so.
Just that both Bill and I were attendants last night, um.
Yeah, we already discussed.
Yeah.
Yeah. I tried to attend the uh, the meeting that M M A had um Monday about uh town issues and, and uh marijuana. And um I registered for it. I never got feedback saying I was registered and here's the link to get to it. I called and left a message for the woman that's in charge of education and heard nothing. I called again today. I think she tried to call me back, but I, I wasn't there to take it, so. I'm not really sure whether it's a case of the way our town email is set up, but it won't receive that from, I think it comes from Zoom.
Yes.
Okay. So.
So those are usually recorded too, and you can go on and watch it afterwards?
Yeah.
So.
But then, I mean, there, there are a lot of different things that they offer that, I mean, people could take advantage of in terms of how to conduct a meeting and whatever.
I find them very resourceful.
Yeah, yeah. No other meeting updates.
Okay. Uh, Dane Suckman Packer's not here tonight because he's at a veterans meeting. He can up here.
I did go to the, the uh, so with the Pink House meeting.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, um, it was Thursday night last week. And, and um, you know, there was a general appeal to the public there and there probably maybe forty people there um to try to ask people to look around and contact people and see if you can find parcels upland that could be, you know, and, and uh, and also they had postcards already pre-addressed to Molton that you could sign and, and um give back to them and they would pay postage and mail it. But um, a lot of the meeting was going over what happened, the chronology of what happened, the chronology of events. But then the real meat and potatoes of how do you go forward was kind of, please help us try to find this land, few people sitting out there, you know? And I, and I, I kind of said, um, you know, Fish and Wildlife had to ask their realty group to do that. That's their function. And now you're asking the public to do that. I mean, is Fish and Wildlife Realty comatose now? Are they not doing it? Are they not engaged doing it?
They said it takes a, a much longer period of time than a regular real estate um search.
But I mean, how would you react?
Just, just the way that they work.
If I knocked on your door and said you have land to, for sale because I wanna do something to preserve the Pink House as opposed to some from, someone from a federal agency coming to say, listen, this is what we'd like to do. I mean, you know, that's all well and good, I mean.
I'd probably get mad at the federal agency.
Yeah, yeah, I mean, maybe you would too, Jeff, but I, I mean, I think they're at that point where they're really reaching out. You had a long conversation with Rochelle today.
Today, it was just about um.
I think, I, I went with Bill to the meeting and I think the uh fact that no one has looked at any land in Raleigh or Ipswich.
That was a great point Jeff made.
That's a lot of territory that is contiguous by whatever they, radius they want to the uh refuge, 'cause it goes all the way down. So, and then there's a lot of forested area that you really don't think about up behind Pearlie's Marina, behind the compost plant. There's a lot of land on there that would give the refuge the ability to study marsh migration 'cause that's one of their main, you know, worries right now is how is the marsh, as it goes underwater, going to migrate? But of course, when you buy up a land, you use the money quick.
Well, that remains to be seen. Okay, review and approve of uh meeting minutes. We have minutes from the November twenty-eighth meeting.
Mm-hmm.
I want to take a motion to approve. Second. Okay. Any discussion? Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? The ayes had it, okay. We have warrants.
Motion to sign.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. No executive session, motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
All in favor? Is there a second?
Second.
Second.
Okay, all in favor, favor?
Aye.
Okay, we're adjourned.